And the auditorium is packed.
Hi, Doctor.
The meeting will now come to order. We are now holding the December meeting of the Fayette County School Corporations Board of School Trustees. Will you join me in a salute to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have school highlights tonight, and I think that Mr. Judd is going to make that presentation. So, the meeting is yours, sir.
Well, President, Board, Cabinet, thank you for having me here tonight. I will just speak for a few minutes, and then I have some students and their advisor here that would love to show you some of the things that they're doing in class, and I think you'll be very proud of the work they're doing. I know that I am. First thing I want to remind you of, and some of you took part, and I appreciate you showing up for our advanced accreditation that we went through a couple of weeks ago. When the visiting team left, they told us that they are recommending us for accreditation again, and we've been accredited since 1908, so something to be proud of. It's a learning process. As you go through the process, you find out on your own what your strengths and your weaknesses are, and you come up on your own with a plan to improve. And so when the visiting team left, a lot of the things that they mentioned, they felt we needed a little work on, were things that we have already been working on and had already earmarked for ourselves to work on. So, we felt really good about the process, and again, I appreciate all the help from Central Office and the Board members who were able to come and help us. I will tell you that in a couple of weeks, we hope that the state will release school grades, and we're hoping for big things at the high school. We're very excited. We've worked very hard, and we're still working hard. We already know that for next year's A through F, or whatever type of grade the state comes up with, our graduation rate will be down a little bit than what it was in 2012. The 2013 rate is down a little bit, but we're still working in math, we're still working in college readiness, we're still working in English, and we're hoping to meet the state's 90%, 90%, 90%, 25% goals that they have for all high schools. And that's 90% of your students graduate on time, 90% of your students pass the Algebra ECA, 90% of your students pass the English 10 ECA, and at least 25% of your students graduate with three dual credits. And I can tell you that last year, we had 29% of our students graduate with 12 dual credits or more. So, we're way ahead of the curve on college readiness. I would like to mention, and I know Mr. Duncan is here, I didn't think he would be, but I'm going to mention that fall sports teams had some great successes. Girls golf had a record of seven and one. They were conference champs in our new conference. They were sectional champs. Girls soccer's record was two, eight, and five. They were a young team. They improved throughout the season. Boys soccer, sixteen and four. They had our first sectional championship ever, and they were very exciting to watch. Volleyball was thirteen and nineteen. Girls cross country were also conference champs, sectional champs, and they advanced to the semi-state. Boys cross country was sectional champs. They placed eighth in the regional. Football was two and eight, and if you attended any of their games, you know that they were very competitive. They were in every game and had a chance to win most games, so we were very excited to watch them. And tennis team had a record of five and thirteen, and they were extremely young. They didn't have any returning varsity players. Now, I would just take a brief moment to introduce Lisa Morris, the advisor for journalism classes. She has brought with her students who are the main leaders in the process of publishing our school newspapers, The Clarion, and our school yearbook, Coheskin. So, they're going to take a few minutes and show you what they do. Thank you. I'll go ahead and introduce them. We have Becca Seeley, you guys can raise your hand. Becca's the editor-in-chief of The Clarion. Seth Winsted, he's the managing editor. Katie Bailey, the online editor. And for the yearbook, The Coheskin, we have Haley Crum, who's editor-in-chief.
Those are yours.
Those publications, The Clarion and The Coheskin, have been long, have a long history at the high schools. Clarion's celebrating their 100th year. Coheskin's celebrating their 90th. Each year, we get to reinvent the publication, and we use new ideas that we gain from past experiences, and like, some of us went to camp at IU, and we use those new ideas to create a reinvented version of the newspaper each year. And a goal that we have created for this year is to incorporate a larger variety of students and staff into our coverage by using quote collections, writer's corner, photo opinions, things of that nature. And then we also like to cover more newer events instead of covering past events this year.
Yeah, like Becca said, we incorporated new goals for this year. So, for instance, covering a variety of different things, not just one, let's say, prominent club, for instance. I mean, sure, we may know that student government was in charge of setting up for homecoming, but what in the world does Magic Club do? Or, for instance, Katie, if you flip through, like, we covered Guitar Club, how it had a new sponsor. Make sure you put a laser pointer right here. And also, we found ways to incorporate, rather than just having a story about something, we can incorporate pictures with it, we can incorporate infographics, slide, personality profiles, like what Katie Bailey appeared. And also, like Becca said, with quote collections, we can, rather than just telling a story, we can show it, and we can involve more people and how they feel, and what they have to say about a certain topic.
We like to go more in-depth with topics as well, and even though CHS Today gets the topic first, it gets to cover it first, we like to put more information in it for our students and give them more background on the topic. And with the design, we like to, we want to include a better modular packaging in the design, which is keeping it, there's, modular packaging is keeping it in a certain way that most professionals do, like the square boxes and keeping it in order, and we like to do that.
Yeah, like she said, just including, rather than, just including type, you can include pictures and have certain elements go with the story. You can have quote collections help tell the story, really, and pictures to help draw attention to it. You can have data and polls to help you get a better representation of student feelings about things and student population. And rather than just, like you said, saying information, you can show it, you can show how big of an impact something has on the school. You can show pictures, infographics that attract readers and make them evolve and want them to read.
Last year, we revamped our online presence, and as you see here, we have two ways of promoting our website and our online presence. One is through issue.com, which allows us to actually project and show online what our print version would look like. And we also have our student room website, which adds and enhances more information to our print coverage. This year was the first year we participated in an onsite competition at State, and we actually received third place. We use this website to help feature other students and make our paper more interactive. If you look here, we actually have QR codes on some of our pages that will take, that if you scan with an app through an Android device, or any mobile device, it will take you like, straight to our online. Say if we were to, you take, you have a paper in front of you, you take your phone, and with a QR code scanner, you scan that. That would take you straight to our website where you can, where we feature polls, more student opinions, interesting graphics for students to look at that will help pull them
We encourage you to keep reading the newspaper because we work really hard on it, and we just really appreciate you guys and how you read it, and we thank you very much for your support of our publication. And our next issue comes out next week, and we hope you enjoyed our presentation.
And as always, you guys can always access new information if you don't have the print version in front of you. The easiest way to get it is through our online site, QR embedded widget. It says, "Read current issue of Clarion," and you click to read it, and it brings up our issue. Now, I'd like to hand it over to Haley Crum, the editor-in-chief of the yearbook.
Okay. Well, as I said, I'm the editor-in-chief of the yearbook, which is The Coheskin. We cover everything throughout the year because we only send out once a year. We are celebrating the 90th year this year, and we work to cover more people and more clubs because we realize that everybody's involved in something, so we're trying to cover everybody from at least one thing. We're trying to get everybody in the book three times. We like to cover everything that's happened, and we want to try to stay on top of things, but since it comes out at the end of the year, everybody, it has to be in the past tense. So, like, if they look back at it, they'll say, "Oh, yeah, that did happen that year." So, you guys covered about everything. We're kind of like Clarion, we go along with them. These are just some of the sample spreads that we've had, that we've finished so far, or we're working on so far this year, so. Yeah, that's about it.
I would like to say something. Most of the adults in this room realize that when you are in a group, maybe there's 70, 80 people in the group, there's usually only about four or five people at the top that do all the work. Here's four or five of the students who have been doing a lot of the work for our Clarion and Coheskin classes. In any situation where you have a new advisor, you have some kids that have been with it a few years, that don't like the new program, and they leave. I will tell you that this semester, we had students in photography class who liked what they're doing enough that they have now joined the Clarion and Coheskin classes, and so we're growing that group of students that want to take part and become leaders, and that's something that we all should be proud of. Like I said, Lisa Morris is back. She was gone for nine years. She taught in Carmel and Cambridge City-Lincoln, and we're looking forward to her building the program that she has the vision for in our community, and these kids are right at the beginning of it. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you very much for being here and for presenting to us. We'll move on to the next item. I think we have more presentations for my school, but next on the agenda is a, are there any, getting ahead of myself, motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I approve to adjutant's.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second? Mr. Jones? All those in favor, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Are there any patron comments on our agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on. Dr. Hodges will greet them as they come around the corner. And Mr. Judd, if you will come ahead and get ready to do, but please wait until Dr. Hodges comes back in.
I could spend all night recognizing myself, but I won't.
Okay, Mr. Judd, we're ready for a recognition of the CHS counselors, et cetera.
Okay. At this time, I'd like for Jamie Hamm, Anne Shannon, and Jeremy Corn to come forward. It is my pleasure to recognize these three Conshew High School guidance counselors for being awarded the Indiana Gold Star Counseling Award. The award highlights the hours of work completed by the counselors, their steering team, and advisory council, and some of you sitting here today were part of that hard work. They were recently recognized on November 15th at the Indiana School Counselor Association State Conference. It was a very big banquet hall, lots of people were there, a lot more than I thought would be there. The award basically means that our counseling program meets or exceeds the nine components of the Indiana School Counseling Program standards. So, here's the best counseling program that I've ever had the pleasure of working with, and will continue working with, I hope. Also that day, there was one high school counselor that was recognized. Jamie Hamm was chosen as an exemplary school counselor for 2013. Her hard work, dedication, and support of professional school counselors in Indiana was also acknowledged at the conference, and I would like to read a little bit from her recommendation letter. Jamie Hamm is one of the counselors at Conshew Senior High School in Conshew, Indiana. She is considered by her peers to be a master counselor who has kept pace with the changes in technology and best practices in counseling methods. As guidance department chair, she has recently guided the school through the Indiana Gold Star process. She's an advocate for her students, actively involved in the school's Positive Behavior Support Committee and Response to Intervention Committee. Jamie is a leading member of the early college high school team that successfully applied for and received full endorsement as one of only seven early college high schools in Indiana. She is actively involved in the PTO and volunteers in a number of different sports. She is considered a top gun in her school and a go-to person that her administration looks to when things need to be accomplished in her school. Jamie Hamm, exemplary high school counselor in Indiana. Now, I'd like for Olivia McMillan to come forward. Eighteen high school student athletes from across Indiana began the year as members of the 2013-14 IHSAA Student Advisory Committee. The Student Advisory Committee represents the entire IHSAA membership of 409 schools, and its structure reflects that of the IHSAA Board of Directors in terms of classification and districts, as well as female, urban schools, and minority representation. Each year, the IHSAA receives nominations from school principals on behalf of student athletes from member schools. From that group of this year's nominations, only 23 students were selected for interviews by members of the executive committee. From those 23 interviews, nine juniors were invited to join the group of nine seniors serving their second year. And we were fortunate to have one of our students, Olivia McMillan, chosen to be on the committee. And Olivia's just going to tell you a little bit about what she has planned as a member of the Student Athletic Committee for the IHSAA.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Nice to meet you tonight. All right. I just wanted to come and let you know what I was doing. The Student Advisory Committee, otherwise known as the SAC, helps out with state championships, all other competitions. We just are kind of behind the scenes, help everyone out, make some of the decisions. We're like the team voice of the IHSAA. It's not just old people up there. And so, the commissioner, Bobby Cox, decided that he wanted to have the SAC be, have, I guess you would say, a certain leadership project. And he had some people go ahead and present to the year before me. I wasn't part of the people that decided to choose this, but I was told that Special Olympics was just perfect for the job. It was just, brought tears to everyone's eyes when they thought about it because they, just like us, are competing, and that's what they love to do, and that's what they want to do. So, they, the IHSAA decided to partner with the Special Olympics, and they called it Champions Together. And so, it's my job as part of the council to have fundraisers and do stuff like that for Special Olympics. And so, this upcoming Tuesday, next week, there will be a game during halftime. Special Olympics kids from Franklin County are going to come and play a little mini-game, which will be really fun during the, we'll play Reshville that night, which, that's Big Rappel, so that'll be a fun game. And we'll sell T-shirts that say Champions Together on them, and we'll have buckets going around to just raise as much money as we can for Special Olympics because it's a great cause, and it's nice to have kids be able to get out there and play. So, it'd be nice if everyone would come. I'm inviting you to that game. You can buy a T-shirt. It'd be awesome. They're $10. But, thank you, everyone. It's nice to see you tonight.
Congratulations, Olivia, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right, and to our counselors. We certainly appreciate what you're doing and the awards that you have received, and congratulations to each one of you. With that, if any of the guests would like to depart, you can do that, but you're certainly welcome to stay through our meeting.
Don't know why we did this.
Next on the consent agenda, we will be covering the following items. Approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of 11:12-13 and the executive minutes of 11:07-13. The personnel report contained retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera. The approval of the November 2013 Claims 33623 through 33933. Acceptance of donation from scrap steel from Contract Industrial Tooling and motor oil from Walmart for WTCC. Approval of end-of-year business office procedures. Permission to investigate the 2014 school bus purchase through the state bid list. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Second it. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh-uh.
And the motion carried. Next on our agenda would be the action items. A personnel report from Dr. Bayer.
Thank you, Mr. Birchey, Dr. Hodges, members of the board, several items for your review and consideration this evening. First off, on personnel, individual personnel. Jonathan Fisher, a certified staff member, science teacher, CMS effective from number 27. Support staff members, Tim Clausen, Technology Educational Assistant Physician at CHS. Donald Murphy, computer technician at CHS. Michelle Segrist, Head Start Education Assistant at Eastview. And extracurricular David Ellis, Head Varsity, softball coach at CHS effective from number 15. In addition, this evening, I want to do a quick review of two items that are very important and we've been working on. One is the recommendation and approval of the Maintenance Custodial Mechanic Union Agreement. I want to first begin by thanking our team members. Dr. Hodges, Janie Callen-Tolliver, Mr. Hilton, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Taylor for serving on that committee as well as the union side, and Mike Burgers here tonight as the chief spokesperson and chief steward for that group. And it's been a real pleasure working with Mike and his team. An outstanding job in accomplishing this in just three short meetings. We appreciate the leadership that Mike brought to his team as well. Some of the highlights of this particular contract. First of all, again, the last session we reached a tentative agreement was December 4th on Wednesday. Mike's group got together this past Saturday to ratify the contract, and then we'll here tonight to formally adopt that. It's a multi-year contract by language. There are items in there typically that can be dealt with and rarely changed due to the language, the way it's written. So, we're going to go with a two-year timeframe from January 1, 2014 through December 31, 2015. We will allow the re-opener to happen each year for the wage and wage-related benefits because, due to the uncertainty of funding, we want to make sure we address that appropriately and responsibly each year. The health insurance part of that, FCSC will contribute, again, the cost-sharing amount that has been done in the past. Using Plan 3 as an example, the board contributes of almost 93% of the single plan premium, and for the individual plan, about 86.5%. Those new amounts are 55.33 for single, and 12.995 for the family plan using Plan 3. The hourly rate of increase will be 25 cents on the hour, and that will begin January 2nd, 2014. Some compensation pieces. One is on the emergency calls, as we discussed that when an emergency is defined, and we've defined what that is, and is necessary to respond to that. A travel time of 30 minutes will be allotted and paid, as well as a chance to respond to and deal with the emergency. Those will be paid accordingly. In addition, we, Mike and I have been working on a memorandum of understanding for snow emergencies and allow makeup hours to be made should the, at the end of the week, should an emergency be determined and members are called, sent home early due to the safety purposes, and have to be a chance to make it this time later on. So, again, Mike is working, we worked on that, and Mike is reviewing that with his team right now, and we feel that's a fair opportunity to allow them to not miss hours, but to get compensated for those hours. Starting date, prior to this year, our contract had always, it began in July 1 to June 30. We transitioned over to a January 1 to December 31 contract over the past 18 months, and so, with this contract also following suit, there was not a need to begin negotiations in April, but instead, the date suggested change was October 1, which we would agree upon. And finally, enter desk tonight, our evaluation samples for custodial maintenance. The corporation is moving to a response-based evaluation tool that better understands and evaluates the effectiveness of each person's position. So, beginning January 1, 2014, we will look at the effectiveness of each employee and use a more apropos evaluation instrument in understanding and fairly evaluating the performance of all of our employees, particularly in this case, our mechanics, maintenance folks, as well as custodians. Those are the major provisions of the contract as outlined. Any questions on any of those? If not, I'm going to move then to the, also, we have tonight increases for salary and benefit changes for support staff, administrators, and bus drivers, as well as greater support staff. Again, I'll highlight just a few quick items on that. The support staff, 2013, 2014, still have, those who are less than 10 years have incremental increases, and those are at your places tonight and also in your board packet. They were received in July and August. If they were less than 10 years, they received incremental raises. Those at the top of the scale who did not receive increment will receive 1.58% increase, which is the same amount provided for teachers in the local funds as percentage of teachers' and total salaries. Half of that 1.58% increase will be paid into December 2013 as a stipend, and then their new hourly rates will increase beginning January 2nd, 2014. For 2014-2015, we are going to take the, because the support staff will also be moving to an evaluation instrument that will allow them to be compensated based on their performance, there will be a pool of $40,000 based on incremental costs for 2013-14. Those will be divided Those will be divided among highly effective and effective personnel following the evaluation this year and those will be weighted according to, um, current hourly rate for employee hours work, days work and so on. So that a employee who works, uh, eight hours a day or two hundred sixty-one days will be fairly compensated as opposed to the person who works five point seven five hours a day maybe one hundred and eighty days. This calculation will not exceed, uh, three percent. Calculation we made at the end of the year, the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen school year, and if a person works a hundred and twenty more days or longer, uh, they'll be entitled to that increase if they're effective or highly effective. Those increases would take place beginning July second or whenever that person returns from work to start the fourteen, fifteen school year. All compensation increases will be on the base hourly rate. Bus drivers a little bit different and they're also included in your, um, support staff salary schedule sheet. Uh, their rate will be the same as other non-union, non-certified at that one point five eight percent increase again effective January second. Their new rate will move from twenty sixty-four per hour to twenty ninety-six per hour based on that increase. Uh, there'll be no increase for years of service premiums. And the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year, they'll also be evaluated in, with an instrument, a tool that will be different than what they've used in the past. And those identified as effective or highly effective will receive the same waiting for compensation increases with an interim year only. So whether they're highly effective or effective, they will receive the same amount. Uh, they will continue to receive their years of service premium and step increases of years as outlined on the support staff salary schedule. The base hourly rate for highly effective and effective will increase at the same percentage as other non-union, non-certified staff, but again, but not to exceed three percent. And finally, administrators for twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen will be receiving the rate of highly, will receive a rating of highly effective or effective. Uh, not including the superintendent, the Director of Magic Moments will receive a stipend similar to those of the teacher received, uh, that are receiving this month, adjusted based again on the number of days worked. So again, administrator who works two sixty-one will be paid accordingly, different than those who have a hundred, two hundred and twenty days. The range of those stipends will be twenty-six, ninety-four, seventy-six to thirty-four, eighty-one, eighty-four. Director of Magic Moments will receive a stipend of twelve, ninety-seven, forty-seven. And finally, for fourteen, fifteen, administrator's pay will again be determined, uh, by the twelve hundred dollars similar to what would be placed on the teacher's base in the fall of fourteen, fifteen. Again, based on performance, uh, that formula is, uh, using an elementary principal, for example, who works two hundred and twenty days, that factor would be twelve hundred dollars divided one eighty-four gives a six dollar fifty-two cent increase per day. That times two twenty days is fourteen, thirty-four. And that is multiplied by responsibility factor. Responsibility factors differ from the superintendent to HR people, to, um, uh, elementary principals and so on. And that responsibility factor for an elementary principal will be one point two five. So in this particular incident, that elementary principal will receive an increase on their base of seventeen, ninety-three. Uh, entertain any questions there might be on salary increases for support staff, bus drivers or administrative staff. If none, Mr. Burchett, I would ask for your consideration and approval of all personnel items in the personnel report this evening.
Okay, we've heard the report. Do, uh, we hear a motion to accept the personnel report?
I move to accept personnel report.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Jones? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? I hear none. I might add that in the audience is, uh, David Ellis, who we just, uh, approved as our Head Varsity Softball Coach and so wanted to say welcome. And I didn't know if all the board might know you, David, so give an opportunity to be seen. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, we move into, uh, the next action item, which is the, uh, two thousand and fourteen School Board Meeting Calendar. We've had a chance to see that. Do I hear a motion regarding the meeting calendar?
I move to approve the meeting calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hunt. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the approval of the matching grant for Safeway to schools and, uh, Dr. Hodges, do you want to speak to that?
I can do that. We're about, a little over a year ago, uh, we had a presentation and we talked about a partnership in trying to improve sidewalks and, uh, ways to schools. And at that point in time, it was an NDOT grant that was a hundred percent match, or there was no match, it was a hundred percent grant. Uh, that's changed a little bit. NDOT's asking for a twenty percent match and, uh, we're asked, we've been asked if we'd partner with the city and with economic development and pitch in a third of that, which we've about forty-five hundred dollars for the study, the engineering of that, uh, of that project. And, uh, I would recommend that you, uh, you approve that. This won't put the sidewalks in, this will just determine, uh, what needs to be done to make that, make that happen.
Can you give any idea what that cost will be?
No, I, I don't. And, and we're, we're focusing primarily on, uh, Frezey and Grandview, not all of the schools in the district. And I don't, I did ask Diana Wright if we had a number on that. She did not. I think Jane's been very active in that. I'll just look to her if she has any ideas on...
On the total of the, the engineering part of it?
No.
The total project, the, the total grant's a quarter of a million dollars if it's approved.
If it gets approved. The total grant's a quarter of a million dollars. The engineering piece is about thirteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, I think.
But isn't there a limit on the, uh, amount of our responsibility?
Right. All we're asking tonight is just forty-five hundred dollars to pay for the engineering. We'll see where that goes and we'll have some more conversation possibly after that.
Do I hear a motion concerning this, uh, item?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Savoy. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Request permission to advertise for the Maplewood windows, uh, Ms. Tallit?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Um, as many of you may recall, included in the capital projects for twenty fourteen were the windows at Maplewood. We do however have some two thousand and eight multi-school bond refinancing funds that could be utilized for this project. Those funds do need to be spent during twenty fourteen as we will be paying off that bond issue. Um, in addition to the information that was provided to preliminarily, we, I was contacted by the Department of Local Government Finance the other day and we had four hundred and forty thousand dollars to cut from the capital projects fund budget. So this project was removed in hopes that you would, um, approve paying for it from those bond refinancing funds. In addition to the amounts that were included, we do have one additional window that Mr. Cloyd, um, had thought had been replaced in phase one, two years ago, but had not. So we're hopeful that there will be sufficient funds to do the twenty-two remaining windows plus this additional window. However, the, um, twenty-third window will be included as an alternate in the bid package if you approve proceeding with this project.
Okay, do I hear a motion regarding the, uh, advertising of the Maplewood Windows Project?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Savoy. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Request permission to advertise for the CHS QZAP projects, uh, Ms. Tallit?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. This is the HVAC and domestic water line replacement project that was included as a part of the, um, QZAP we received from the state of Indiana and the federal government. Uh, the architect is recommending that we include orange galvanized pipe replacement, a water softener for orange for the domestic water, Jennings, the underground HVAC and domestic water connections and Columbia replacement of the underground, um, water supply line to be overhead. Then to include bid alternance of Columbia's galvanized domestic, uh, pipe replacement and Jennings and Jackson's domestic replacement also. That would be part one. Um, we've, we're also having discussions about modernizing the elevator. It was down a couple of weeks at the first of last year. We only have the one elevator at the high school. It's currently not ADA compliant. There is not any foreseen way to make that elevator ADA compliant based on the size needed. So we're going to have a phone conference, Mr. Cloyd, myself and Spenton Associates on Thursday to see if we can come up with an alternate plan or we can get on the same page. If so, I'd like for permission to advertise for that also. If not, we may be deferring discussions about the elevator until next year. Um, we do have three full years to expend the QZAP funds, but I'm not sure, it, the lead time for elevators is so long that if we do, if we can't come to consensus quickly, we would need to defer that. But the domestic water pipe replacement could go on as planned for next year. So I'm asking for permission to advertise now for sure for the doma, the water, um, HVAC and domestic water replacement and perhaps the elevator modernization.
What is your pleasure concerning this, uh, item?
I move to accept a not, not the perhaps bit. How that would be handled?
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Savoy. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Permission to transfer funds from the Transportation Fund to the Rainy Day Fund, Ms. Tallit?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Through discussions with the Finance Committee, we're bringing a recommendation to transfer five hundred thousand dollars from the Transportation Fund to the Rainy Day Fund. There are sufficient rev, or sufficient cash balance in the Transportation Fund to afford this transfer. These monies would then be specifically earmarked to pay future unfunded, uh, bridge liability payments. The bridge are the payments that teachers receive as a part of their severance. If you recall, several years ago, they were implemented and are being phased out. Uh, we have about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars worth of bond proceeds left and our annual expenditures for these bridge payments are generally in the three hundred thousand dollar range. So that would be a huge expense to the general fund. So we would like to put these monies and specifically designate them to go against this expense.
Okay, do I hear a motion concerning this item?
I move we approve the transfer of the funds to Transportation Fund, Rainy Day specifically for the, or specifically designated for the bridge fund repayment.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. That completes our action items for the evening. Are there, uh, any persons in the audience wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas and/or comments of, you may address the board at this time. Comments cannot involve personnel or students. Seeing none, we'll move into the report items. We have the superintendent's discussion group item, uh, group reports. Seeing none. The principals' directors' reports. Seeing none. Director of Personnel Report.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Just a couple of quick things. Um, there are certain, um, requirements and compliances that we have to face each year at HR handles. And one of those that we want to make sure we're compliant on is the Bullying Law, fourteen twenty-three. Uh, our staffs have been working pretty closely, um, with Dr. Ricky and, and principals and so forth to take care of much of the staff work, but even substitutes and volunteers have to be, receive information and training on that. So we're going to have a whole workshop right after the first of the year for all substitute teachers and we'll be getting information out to all volunteers at each of the buildings so they have access to information concerning bullying awareness and so forth. So we're reading the letter to law, a number of things we're working on. We have a program called Safe Schools, uh, Compliances for Each Employee. That's one we're, we're targeting right now and we're working on and so. Uh, I mentioned also during my, my report, the, uh, support staff evaluation, uh, new evaluation tool. We rolled out during the, uh, month of January between the thirteenth and the thirty-first. We'll be meeting at each building to provide, um, uh, information to all employee groups, uh, starting off with our support staff groups at each of the building levels, uh, as far as how that evaluation system will work and how this compensation package that I described tonight will affect them in the future. So that'll be coming up. And then finally, just a reminder, and I think at your places, uh, tonight is the, the holiday lunch service, our third, fourth year. And Maplewood, uh, beginning on the twenty-third, we'll be, we'll be serving the week of Christmas, the twenty-third, sixth and seventh, which is Monday, Thursday, Friday, eleven-thirty to one-thirty, I believe. Uh, and also the following week, uh, New Year's week, third, the second, the third. Any child under the age of eighteen years or younger is free to get to Maplewood, has free lunch. Adults may purchase those for two dollars and seventy-five cents. There'll be whole, cold and hot lunches available for any and all students and adults that wish to visit that site and we encourage people to use that. There was a, a nice article in the paper, I think yesterday, that promoted that as well. So we appreciate the media supporting that. It'll also be on Channel Three and on the marquee at Maplewood. So, uh, again, a great opportunity for our students to receive meals during the holiday break.
Thank you. Uh, Director of Finance Report?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Um, again, just want to let the board know that we have been in communication with the Department of Local Government Finance. They are working our budget. Um, we'll expect the seventeen eighty-two notice, which is the official notification, hopefully before too long. But if I understood the representative correctly, our, uh, net assessed valuation dropped to six hundred and sixty-four million dollars. I believe it was six hundred and eighty-three million last year. So in addition to our declining enrollment, which impacts our general fund significantly, the decline in assessed valuation will impact our taxing funds also and make that circuit breaker even more painful. Um, hopefully in January, I'll have all the information to share with you about where we specifically ended up. Thank you.
Okay. Assistant Superintendent's Report?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. I just wanted to invite, um, the board and our patrons and parents to our, um, schools' performing arts programs that they're having all, um, month for the holidays. You can find the, um, dates and locations on the website and pick your school of choice. But we really encourage your parents to come out and we want to thank our principals and our, um, performing arts teachers for the efforts and the work that they put together to entertain us. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Superintendent's Report?
Well, just a couple of things real quick. One, I want to thank Randy for bringing the Publications Department over. I, I think if you've had a chance to, uh, look at those this year, there's, there's really been a marked improvement in, in the, the clarion and it's, it's neat to see the enthusiasm that, that the young people have. I did talk to Martin Hallway a little bit, but I just wanted to publicly make that, that comment. Uh, I think I shared this with you in, in a Friday letter, but, uh, as Janie was talking, it reminded me at, uh, at a conference I was at yesterday, there was a lot of talk about, uh, funding for schools, the impact the circuit breaker has had. And, uh, this proposal that's going to be going through the General Assembly to talk about personal property tax, especially for, for manufacturing businesses to, to forgive that, uh, that could be as much as a billion dollars lost in revenue for our state. It doesn't just impact schools, it affects other folks. So that's just something to, to look at as that may gain traction through the, uh, through the General Assembly. As I've said here, especially for, for Fayette County and Connersville, it's really an interesting mix where we need to do things to attract business, but we have to be prudent in how we do that so that we don't put our taxing unit at, units at a disadvantage.
we do that so that we don't put our taxing unit at, units at a disadvantage. And that's, that's a delicate balancing act, and I wish I had the answers as to how best to do that. I don't, I just want to make you aware that some things that benefit one group may have a detrimental impact on the others. It goes back to that old saying that if you don't solve a problem, you just create others. And on that happy note, I want to wish everybody a happy holidays.
Do we need to, Mr. Burge?
Moving along, yes.
Do we need to contact our representatives?
I think that would be the appropriate folks to talk to. Talk to our senator, talk to our representative from the House, and make them aware. I did ask Janie today, and I gave her a very, very short notice, I think it was late this afternoon. I don't know if we can calculate the impact that that would have on Fayette County, but I think she's going to be talking to our county officials to see if we might be able to get some ballpark figures. When we get that, I'll share that with you in a Friday.
Do we need to contact specifically what to say?
We'll, we'll help you out with that a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. For the good of the cause, anyone have any comment they'd like to make this evening?
Well, Mr. President, I would like to thank our community for their continued support of the school corporation, as evidenced by the scrap steel donation from Contract Industrial Tooling and the motor oil donation from Walmart for the Right Water Technical Career Center. We've got a great community, and they do support our school corporation. Again, I'd like to thank specifically Mr. Berger and Mr. Bayer for their work in contract negotiations. Those two guys did most of the work. The rest of the committee, it was, it was pretty, pretty easy and pretty smooth. We talked a little about employee safety, we talked a little bit about language, and of course, we talked a little bit about money. But everybody, there was constructive conversation, and I think everybody learned, and at the end of the day, our students were the big winners. So, so thanks, guys, for everything you've done.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President?
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
All those in favor, please say aye. Needing adjournment.